All right, welcome everyone. We will get started with our annual budget hearing and at this point I will turn over to Mr. Lombard.
Okay, before you have a packet of information for the 1718 budget, not a lot of changes in totality. Presented the preliminary budget in May and this one shows a $268,000 deficit budget, just a little, slightly more than last, the preliminary in May. Quite a few little changes, but I'll just quickly go through some of the ones that we changed from the preliminary budget. We added some money for resource officer, high school instructional software, elementary text, those were each 5,000, elementary textbooks 13,000, charter bus service 5,000. We added a couple of sections of kindergarten, so we had some supply expenses, an additional The Brandon Valley Intermediate School, we had to bump up our contract for HBAC, kind of when you build that new building, it's not much that first year and then it starts increasing after that, so that was a plus 7,000. Our curriculum salary budget went down about 10,000. And then we had that Brandon Valley leaps program that we kind of just moved some money back and forth and within the special education fund. So that's kind of a summary of the expenses that we, that I changed from the preliminary to the, to the actual here in July. If you go to page two of the packet that I sent you, it shows the total expenditures for the general fund of 26,200,000, 5.165 million in the capital fund, 5,670,000 in the special education fund, 279,000 in this pension fund, 2.8 million in the bond redemption fund and 2.4 million in the food service fund. The revenues are on page three, which shows we have a deficit, projected deficit of 268,000 in the general fund, 675,000 in the capital fund. As we talked about, just reminder, what we talked about there is helping to fund some of a major small project, I guess I'll call it the middle school addition, is 1.8 million, so we plan to use some of the fund balance to finance that project. Plan to use some of the 1.8 million that we have available. The special education fund has a slight increase or surplus in the next year's budget of 60,000. The pension fund, as we talked about earlier too, has no revenue, so it's just expenditures basically coming out of that fund, balanced in the bond redemption fund and a slight surplus in the food service fund. I would pay a little bit of attention to the bottom of that page, which shows our estimated fund balances throughout the terms to end this year and to begin next, or the end next year. This year will end up, projected ending up about 5.3 million, which is almost identical to what we are this year, so it should be about a break even. We're budgeted for $345,000 deficit and it looks like it'll be break even. So that's good news. Capital fund will end the year at 1.8 million. Special ed fund will end the year at 140,000, pensions 619,000, bond redemption 789,000 and food service 680,000. As we've talked about before, I think the management of these fund balances has been good by you guys and, and those deficits that we project don't always come to fruition. I fully intend that they will, but they don't always do that depending on what, what happens during the year with revenues and expenditures, but we've been able to manage those balances very well. The next page shows a chart on the revenues for all the funds, $42 million of total revenues. You can see the breakdown of each fund and then the percentages based on local, state or federal sources. Local sources 51% and state sources 42%, so 93% of your total revenue for all funds combined in the school district revenue side is from state and local sources. The expenditures for all the funds totals up to 43,258,000. The general fund comprises 61% of that, capital fund 13%, special education fund 13%. Pension fund is 1%. The bond redemption fund is 7% of the total and food service is 6% of the total. Majority in the, of the expenditures are in the three major funds, capital fund, general fund and special education. The next chart shows a breakdown of salaries and who they go to within the school district. 74% of them are paid what I call directly into the classroom, teachers and educational assistants. 7% are custodian maintenance staff. 3.6% are central office, board of education and technology departments. 4% to food service, 6.8% to the building administration and 4.6% to the transportation staff. That's a breakdown of all the salary and benefits, or salaries I should say. Specifically with the general fund then, the revenue of 25.9 million dollars for 1718, where it's coming from, local taxes comprise 32% of the total. State sources comprise 60% of the total. So 92% of the total money that comes into the general fund is from local taxes or state The amount of federal revenues in that whole thing amounts to 2.6%. So we can talk a lot about federal revenues, but in the whole scheme of things, it doesn't make a lot of difference until, you know, we talked earlier about things being cut or proposed to be, to be cut and, and stuff. I don't think we can spend a lot of time worrying about that, but if they do get cut, I mean, it is going to be a little bit of change for us, but in the whole scheme of things, it's not, it's not a whole bunch of money. The operating transfers are about the same as the federal revenue, 675,000 that we have coming from the capital fund into the general fund. And just a reminder on that 675,000, that was when the budgets were cut like 10% from the state of South Dakota and enabled to, it enabled us to do what we did without cutting any staff. We moved those dollars at 675,000, gave no raises, moved those dollars and so it kind of remained status quo for that, withstood that cut with where we are today. The general fund expenditures, 26.2 million. 61% of them are in the instructional services area, 36% in support services and 3% in the co-curricular. Typical numbers that we have each year. Also on the general fund by object level, 85% of the total general fund expenses are for salary and benefits, 5% are utilities. So 90% of the budget is people and opening the doors up. So it's, and we're not, we're not anywhere near that, but when you get into tough times and, and there's cutting to be done, it's very difficult as a board of education because you don't have much to, I mean, until you start getting into people, you can't, it's not like you can shut the utility bill down. So it's fortunate that we're in the financial position that we are, that we don't have to worry about those things. The next slide is the capital fund. All the money for the capital fund comes from local taxes. Expenditures, you can see on the right-hand side, facility improvements, 2.5 million, of which 1.8 is the middle school addition. Maintenance equipment, 66,000, transportation buses, 300,000. Instructional programs, 1.1 million. A million of that is technology. Textbooks and library books, 443,000. Debt service, 554,000 and the transfer out into the general fund is 670,000 and our print shop of 90,000. For a total of 5,840,000 planned expenditures in the capital fund. Yes?
What are likely sources of the donations that you list on the revenue side?
Each year, the booster club, without fail, pretty much through their, whatever Randy calls it, is items that they purchase for all the different sports, amounts to about 30,000 is a big majority of it. We're going to receive some money from the city of Brandon. I call it donations, it's basically reimbursing us for expenses that we're having. We're replacing carpet and floor coverings in the library. We have a share agreement with them. And then there'll be some other donations in there too, but that's the majority of it. Okay, the next slide is the special education fund. It's, it's went up 2% this year. Once again, 47% of the money that we take in on the left side is from local sources, 40% is from state sources. So 87% of the total revenue is state and local sources. Only 13% is from federal revenue. As we all know, with, the goal of the federal government was to fund special education at 40%, which we've never ever come close to that, but it would be very, we'd be very fortunate to have that because that would change 740,000 into 2.3 million. That's not going to happen today or tomorrow, so I wouldn't put that in the bank. On the expenditure side, out of district placements, 365,000, administration 175,000. We spent 610,000 with the co-op. Transportation services and the special education department are high. It's a lot of money to transport special ed kids. It's a lot of one-on-one stuff and that becomes expensive. So 5% of our total budget is for transporting kids back and forth. Instructional is 4.2 million. I had a couple of slides on valuation. These are good news slides. The valuation for 1718, as you can see down there, is 1 billion 780 million, which is up about 100 million from last year, which amounts to 6%. 100 million dollar increase in valuation, it's a very good thing. I mean, there's probably 60% of the schools in the state of South Dakota don't have 100 million total valuation and we're going up 100 million. The mill levies follow that. The total mill levies are down at the bottom compared 17 to 18. The ag levy is going down 2.3%. The owner occupied level is going, owner occupied levy is going down 4.5% and the commercial levy is going down 5.6%. Now that's not a guarantee that your taxes, school taxes are going down there, it all depends on your valuation, what happens to that, if it increases or decreases or whatever, but the levy themselves, all things being equal, should go down those percentages in the school district funds, tax levy. The last page is kind of a summary of the 1718 budget as compared to the 1617. You can see on the top there that expenditures, how they relate to each other from this year to last year. General fund is up 1 million, almost 1 million dollars exactly, 4%. The capital fund is up 800,000, just 16%. That's due to the planned deficit spending for the middle school addition project. Special education fund is up 2%. The pension fund is down 15% or 51,000, just had less early retirees. Bond redemption fund is up 2.6%. The bond redemption fund goes up each year because we have anticipated increases in valuation and that's how we structure that debt to more debt as the years go on, pay off more as the years go on since the valuation will be higher as years go on. The food service is up about 1%. And the revenues, you can see there, the general fund is up about 1,078,000, so the difference between the expenditures being up 1 million and the revenue being up 78, 1,078,000, we have a total difference there of plus 77,000, which we had a deficit of 345,000 this past year. So you take away 77,000 from that 345 and we have 268,000 deficit this year. That's where that, in, summarize it all. The highlights, 6:30, 2017, ending this year. As I said before, our deficit was planned at 345,000. We're going to end the year at a break even. So our fund balance will remain, I think our fund balance is 5,267,000 right now and I have it at 5.3 right in that area. I don't know all the expenses yet, but, and how that came about, revenues that were over budget where the student count was lower or higher than we anticipated, so that amounted to about 200,000. And then we had other revenues net were plus 70,000, so those two items together were 270,000 to the good. We had a couple of items that, revenues that were to the bad. Medicaid admin was 20,000 under and other grants, which we just didn't utilize the, haven't utilized the high school online course grant. They're carrying that over into next year, so it's, it's not like it's gone, we just didn't utilize it this past year, so that'll carry over, but budget wise it was under. We didn't realize that revenue this year, so we're 122,000 under there. And our expenses are projected to come in at 99.2%, which will put it at a plus 200,000 under budget. So a net, those all net out to 322,000 versus 270, the break even point that we're hitting. The increase in revenues of 1,078,000, where that comes from, state aid increase, the 0.3% is about 100,000, a little less than that, just round numbers. Student increase from the previous year was 200,000 that we talked about earlier and then next year we're increasing 105 students, we're projecting for 600,000 of additional Title I grants, franchise tax and other revenues, you can see there the, the increase in revenues that we're planning for there. The expenditures are up 1 million, salary and benefits and additional staff comprise 665,000 of that. Utilities are up this year, as we talked in the preliminary budget, when you have a 5% increase in electricity, doesn't sound like a lot to you and I at our house, but when you spend 850,000, 5% of that is a big number. And we just are planning, or we had and I'm planning on about the same next year, a tougher winter, a colder winter, so that's a crap shoot, who knows what'll happen, obviously, but we increased that line on 120,000 and then we had supplies and materials up 120,000. Budget concerns and challenges, always enrollments. I don't anticipate that changing, but that's what drives everything. Kids drive everything. If you don't have more kids coming in, money becomes a serious issue then. As long as we have more kids coming in, money is a good thing. And then state aid increases continue to be uncertain, I put in there. I mean, even though it's in statute that we're supposed to get increases, we've learned that that's not necessarily, can always be the case, that even though it's a law, it's more of a guideline I think than a, than a rule. Capital fund, we had 100 million dollars in increase in valuation, excellent thing, almost 6% increase in valuation. And I really don't see that slowing down any. It appears like for the next few years it's going to continue in that direction, so everything should be good there. A summary of the expenditures, which we talked about earlier. On the special education fund, we're up about 2% in that fund, which is pretty minute increases, just salary benefit increases in that fund. The challenge is there, as we know, we have a very depleted fund balance in the special education fund, only about 140,000 is all we have left in the fund balance there, which on a 5.7 million budget, five, yeah, 5.7 million budget is not a lot of money, but we're slowly trying to build that back up. We have a surplus of 60,000, so hopefully we can continue to start building that up a little bit. I'd like to get it up to a half a million at some point, which would be about 10% of the budget or a little less, 9, which would be a good number to have in there, but it'll take us a little bit and you need a little luck there too. How about questions on the budget? Like I said, not a lot of changes from the detail of the preliminary budget in May.
Oh, I've got one. Under special education or under expenses, you've got co-op services of 610. How, what percent increase is that? Is that about a 2% from last year about or?
I think it's probably their expense, their expenses, they increased about 2% I think, but Renee might be able to talk. A lot of it depends on the services that we purchased. I mean, we purchased additional slots and various things and we purchased some additional OT and PT I think this year, so it's, it's up more than 2%, but I think their actual expenditures were, they usually stay quite right in line with us, is how they manage that. It's all salary and benefits of people, so it's all driven on that. So they usually piggyback off the raises that we give or close to them, so I would guess it's around that 2% range.
So this, this figure really fluctuates on our services that we incur throughout the year then, I mean?
Mm-hmm.
It isn't?
Mostly fluctuates up, but.
Oh yeah, as the year progresses.
But yeah, it depends on what we buy from them. Now we, you know, we increased our services for what I still call the high impact program, the alternative school this year. We bought additional slots, I think, five or something like that, so five times six, you know, that's 30,000 dollars.
Okay.
That wouldn't be coming out of the special education fund, so that was a bad example, but you know what I'm, what I mean on that. Other questions? Like I said, it's a, it's a mundane budget as far as a lot of changes and a lot of glitz and stuff, there's not a lot of glamour to this year's budget, but you know what, sometimes that's all right. We're operating on the, within the parameters that they're being given to us by the state of South Dakota and I think you as a board should be very proud of that and we're doing very well with, based on the parameters that are given to us and there's no opt-outs in the, in this budget or any future, near future budgets, so it's all benefit for the Brandon Valley Board of Education, in my humble opinion. Other questions or concerns, comments? I wish there was something I could talk about like 16 and a half percent raises for the teachers like we had last year, but they're not in this budget. See anybody, but administration, I don't know if there's anybody.
You guys have any questions? Questions, comments from administrators?
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, 6:21, we need to wait for 6:30, right?
You do.
Okay, so we'll just pause.
Take a moment.
We're just going to pause until 6:30, until we can restart for organizational meeting. Thanks. All right.
When you hear your name, there we go.
Welcome everyone. We'd like to open our annual organizational meeting this evening with the pledge of allegiance, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Rule call, Ms. Lombard. Oh, you're okay. Yes.
Odie.
Yep.
Clatt.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
All right, well, thank you for everyone for coming tonight. I appreciate it. We've already heard our business portion. With that, I will turn it over to Mr. Lombard for the swearing in and oath of office of our newest board member.
Okay, Ellie. This is a little awkward that I'm swearing you in and you're not here, but the awkwardness is all on me, not you. Just a quick little oath of office that I have to give you that required by law for your election onto the school board. Do you, Ellie Saxor, having been elected to the office as school board member of the Brandon Valley School District solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the state of South Dakota and that you will faithfully and impartially, to the best of your knowledge and ability, perform all duties of the office as school board member as provided by law.
I do.
Very good. Congratulations. You're now elected to a three-year term on the Brandon Valley School Board.
Thank you.
Welcome Ellie. With that, I will turn it over to Superintendent Larson for the election of board officers, please.
By the oath of election of board officers, at this point in time, I would accept nominations for board president.
I move Renee Odom for president.
I have a nomination for Renee Odom for board president. Are there any other nominations for board president? Any other nominations? Here are no other nominations for board president. I would entertain the motion that nominations cease and we cast a unanimous ballot for Renee Odom to serve as board president.
So moved.
Second.
I have a motion by member Clatt, a second by member Odie. Rule call, vote. Mr. Lombard.
Clatt.
Yep.
Odie.
Yep.
Saxor.
Yes.
Schrader.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes.
Congratulations, President Odom. I turn the meeting over to you.
Thank you very much. At this time, I would entertain a nomination for vice president, please.
I would nominate Greg Odie as vice president.
Thank you. There's a nomination for Mr. Odie. Are there any others? If not, I would entertain a motion that nominations cease and that we, that we hand request that we present a unanimous ballot for Mr. Greg Odie as vice president of the school board. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. Rule call, vote, please, Mr. Young, Mr. Lombard.
Clatt.
Yep.
Schrader.
Yes.
Saxor.
Yes.
Odie.
I may have to say.
Just say yes.
Yes.
Odom.
Yes. Thank you very much. Congratulations, Mr. Odie.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, next on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve the agenda as presented unless someone has a request to move something or change something on it.
So moved, approve the agenda as presented.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Next, conflict of interest disclosure, waiver requests. Do we have any of those tonight?
Madam Chair, not this evening, I would ask all board members to review past waivers that have been submitted and then I would like to try and approve any waivers that we do have at our first meeting in August. So consider if you have any contractual interests with or connected to the Brandon Valley School District in the amount over 5,000 dollars. And again, I'd ask that those be brought forward at the first meeting in August. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That takes us to item I, adoption of the regular procedures for the 2017-2018 Board of Education meetings. This is consent approval. Please note there are 12 items under this section. I would entertain a motion to approve this as presented tonight. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, approval of the minutes from the regular board meetings of June 12th and June 26th. If there is nothing that needs to be corrected or revised, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There, there's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to financial items. Mr. Lombard.
Questions on the bills and claims that I submitted in the board packet for your review. I'll entertain any of them. One bond payment of 447,000. Total bills of 1,163,000. Pay vouchers of 21,500, food service bills of 9,200. No questions.
If there are no questions for Mr. Lombard on the bills and claims, I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. Next, financial report, Mr. Lombard.
Cash report for the month of June, the end of our fiscal year, 10.8 million coming into the month, 3.3 million in receipts and 3.6 million in disbursements, left 10.5 billion in cash at the end of June 2017. 6.7 million of that is in the general fund, 1.8 million in the capital fund, 520,000 in the special education fund, 619,000 in the pension fund, 789,000 in the bond redemption fund, that's 59,000 in our enterprise fund. 3.3 million dollars of receipts is itemized on the next two pages. Um, receipts, state aid and taxes, the majority of them. The payroll for the month of June totaled $1,633,000. And the financial reports pretty much cover those during the budget presentation. Revenues are the first two pages, and expenditures are the next four pages. They said they're showing, the general fund is showing 98.3%. We have a lot of payables and lots of salaries to pick up on that, so it winds up about 99.2% at the end of the year. Review all those during the preliminary budget, so that won't take a lot of time there. The financial statement for the food service department shows, uh, aggregate loss at the end of June 30th of $11,000. The trust agents' report totaled $135,000 at the end of June, more than other. That's all I have.
Thank you. Are there any questions from Mr. Lundberg on the financial report?
What do you know about the bank franchise tax? That's quite an increased amount than what you were expecting. That's good.
Yeah, it is good. Uh, we, we had, uh, in net, that, you know, the bank franchise tax, tax was up $150,000, which was a very, very good thing. And then our grocery receipts tax, the portion that was attributable to, uh, rural electric co-ops, was down about, uh, about $50,000 from where I projected, so that, in net, our whole lot of other revenues was plus $70,000, so that was a very good thing. And I have the bank franchise tax going into next year, not quite a, a plus 150, but I had it at like a plus 100, so we should have some leeway there again next year. Hopefully that continues that trend.
Anything else on the financial report tonight? Thank you again, Mr. Lundberg. I would entertain a motion to approve the financial report as presented, please.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. There is no community input tonight, so that takes us down to our general business section. Uh, first, we have administration, excuse me, administration reports. Superintendent Larson?
Yes, uh, real quick, just want to provide an update on, um, a wide variety of Cap-Lolay projects that we have going on throughout the district. Tremendous amount of, uh, projects underway, and, uh, Director Henshaw's doing an excellent job maintaining, watching those projects, and managing those projects. Uh, but just real quickly, over at the, here at the high school, uh, we have some roofing project work going on. We also have corridor flooring, um, in the east, towards the east entrance, uh, going on. Uh, at the middle school, naturally, we have our construction project, which you're gonna start to see there is, um, some APHIS go up, um, and then also they got some structural steel work going on at the moment. Uh, the tennis court is being resurfaced over at the middle school complex. Uh, down at the intermediate school, there's some additional sidewalk work being done to, uh, promote pedestrian flow and then also, um, traffic flow and the safe pedestrian movement in and around the intermediate school. At Brandon Elementary, we have a tremendous amount of window and door upgrades going on on the early childhood wing, uh, and there's some playground resurfacing going on at Brandon Elementary as well. Down at Fair, we have some additional cameras going in, and then the, there's a little bit of exterior work going on, uh, upgrading of the receiving door and parking lot overlay. Uh, at Robert Bennett's, there's some exterior work going on as well. Concrete work right in front of the main entrance there, Robert Bennett's, and then they also are receiving an upgrade to their receiving door. Out of Valley Springs, the gymnasium floor is being upgraded to, um, a multi-purpose gymnasium, uh, floor, and then outside, they have a bike pad that's been poured along with a rack for the kids to have their bikes at, and additional work on the parking lot. A few other items I just want, uh, want everyone to be aware of, is we've, we previously talked extensively about our copying strategy within the Brandon Valley School District. The machines are all installed except for at the middle school because of the construction work, and then also the duplicator, um, which is for the construction paper and the, the heavier paper has not yet been installed in the print shop, but all other machines are installed. And then all of these machines will be networked, and that is in progress. Um, just a quick update on the summer lunch program. Overall, uh, we've had success in that area. To date, we've served approximately 8,200 child lunches. Um, it has created some challenges with, um, with operationally, uh, cleaning the Brandon Elementary building and, um, that. So I would say it's, it's been positive overall, but there are certainly some challenges that associate with, uh, with 300 some odd folks walking through your elementary every day where they weren't previously. Quick update on our Dairy Queen purchase. I just received a phone call from the IRS today. The deed is coming out via mail. We anticipate that arriving in the very near future. Um, you may note that our federal grant applications, allocations, typically those are discussed at our July meeting, um, but with the transition to the new administration, there was, I would call, um, a tremendous delay in getting those applications out, and then the release of allocations from the Department of Education. We have now received those items, and I would anticipate those, um, being in front of the Board of Education late August, early September. Uh, we have spoken a little bit about background checks, the Non-Criminal Justice Agency, which is us, and our need for policy. I would tell you that the Associated School Boards, we've been in communication with them. They're in the process of developing their policy. That will be presented, um, at one of our next two meetings, and we will utilize the emergency clause within our own policy adoption, um, procedure to make certain that that is implemented right away to gain compliance with that. Um, then just want to provide a, a little update regarding the innovative career pathway conversation. So previously, I was invited to the governor's mansion, spent a couple of days, um, listening to a variety of individuals speak about innovative career pathways towards the high school diploma. Uh, the governor will be speaking at the superintendent's summer conference and is also hosting a career pathway symposium in early August that we've been invited to. So that conversation just continues to, uh, to occur and, um, may develop. We'll see what fits for the Brandon Valley School District. And then lastly, I would note some extremely important items for the 2017-18 school year. First and foremost, the deadline, a critical deadline that's coming up for our parents and guardians within the school district is the August 9th deadline for bus pass purchase. If your child is going to ride the school bus for the first two weeks of school, you must purchase your bus pass by August 9th. So I would urge all parents and guardians that are going to utilize transportation to contact the transportation department, or they may purchase their bus pass online at the web site. I would note that we have communicated with all, uh, parents that are currently in our Skyward system, uh, via school messenger, and sent an email indicating such information. And then just a few other items I would note on the 17-18 calendar. We'll have new teachers in on August 17th. Uh, all teachers will be back on the 21st. On the 22nd, we are doing, um, an all-staff welcome and lunch. Previously, we'd invited our teachers to, uh, the all-staff welcome, to the, to the welcome back, but this year in the Performing Arts Center, we are inviting all staff and asking all staff to return for the welcome, uh, to kick off the 2017-2018 school year. Going to enjoy a, uh, a rousing welcome back with some rah-rah, and then, uh, we're gonna feed them lunch, and then ultimately, our hope is to take an all-staff picture. So that'll be a, uh, that'll be an interesting endeavor, and then we will start with kids on August 23rd. That would be all I have to report this evening, would certainly entertain any questions you may have.
All right. Thank you very much.
I would, I will report on the, yep, I will comment briefly, yes. Um, so enclosed within your board packet, you would have found the bullying harassment report for this last 16-17 school year. Um, just make a couple of notes. Formal written complaints, pretty typical for when you evaluate past data or the historical data. Um, I would note that investigations without a formal written complaint have trended up just a little bit. That number's a little larger than it has been in the past, with it being at 102 versus anywhere from 95 down to the 60s. Um, I would note that that's not necessarily a bad thing. The good news is, is that's increased awareness about bullying and bullying-like behaviors, and, uh, ultimately, principals and administrators are investigating those, um, reports without the formal written report from an individual. Uh, and then the other item that I would note is when you look at number of each item of action taken, is that within most instant, instances, multiple actions are taken. For example, um, loss of privilege or suspension in addition to counseling. So that's why some of those numbers are, um, larger. If you see, uh, there's more actions than there are incidents, it's because there are multiple actions taken, uh, within each respective incident quite often. Um, and then I would just note, uh, the effectiveness as reported by school administration. Overall, actions have demonstrated the effectiveness and the desired results of eliminating bullying, eliminating bullying-like behaviors. So that would be the district's 16-17 bullying report.
Thank you very much. Any questions on that this evening for Superintendent Larson? Thank you again. Mr. Lundberg, anything else tonight? Would you please thank your staff, Mr. Schobert and Mrs. Miller for all the help also, and we appreciate everything you guys do for our school and our budget, so thank you very much. High school, Dr. Talcott, anything tonight?
No.
Mr. Schluckaway?
No.
Mr. Thorson?
Outside a little dust in the middle school.
Okay. Mr. Bab, anything tonight? Okay. Ms. Foster?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Stodderow? Mr. Henshaw?
No.
Okay. All right. Board policy. Looks like we have, um, a discussion item, IGDI slash IGDJ.
Uh, Madam Chair, yes, so what this is, is this is our, um, activities policy, our extracurricular activities policy, and ultimately what, um, what this does is it aligns our student handbook and our, our board policy, um, together. It is just a discussion item. I would ask each board member to, uh, review that and then bring forward any, um, feedback or insight that they have at our first meeting in August, and then ultimately, um, through the process, we will end at a, um, at a final, at a final version, and that would be adopted at our second meeting in August. Activities Director Marso did a, um, a tremendous job, a phenomenal job of, um, providing the updates and the revisions. Uh, I would note that it has not changed any substantial, um, meaning within the policy. It's more cleanup and then aligning to High School Activities Association handbook practices, those types of things. So, um, that would be, that would be the discussion item that I would note at this point.
Okay. Thank you. So we have a little homework to do there. All right. Thank you very much. That takes us to general business. Item number one, approved memorandum of agreement between the BV School District and the City of Brandon Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program.
Thank you. Uh, Madam Chair, um, I would like to thank the City of Brandon and the Brandon Police Department for their continued partnership with the School Resource Officer Program. It is disappointing that we are, uh, moving from two school resource officers to one school resource officer in the 16th, during the 16-17 school year. If you would remember, uh, prior to my arrival, um, superintendent reported that they were providing a second resource officer at no cost to the school district, uh, for the 17-18 school year, as indicated within the memorandum of agreement. We will move back to one school resource officer. That is disappointing. However, I would note, um, we completely understand that, uh, they deal with a finite budget and have to make difficult decisions with the limited resources that they have. But I would publicly like to invite every officer, um, on duty to our various schools. Their presence in and around our school buildings is absolutely critical. Uh, if they happen to show up during lunchtime, we certainly would provide officers with a meal at no cost, as, um, the School Resource Officer Program is critical to help our students build those positive relationships, um, and that positive understanding of what law enforcement officers do within our system. So, um, would certainly like to have, invite them to our various schools for, uh, provided lunch, and also thank them for their continued service and proximity control in and around our buildings. Uh, certainly recommend approval of that agreement.
Any questions, discussion on this topic? Hearing none, I would entertain a motion to approve the memorandum of agreement between the BV School District and the City of Brandon Police Department for the School Resource Officer Program in our schools in the amount of 69% of the officer's annual base wages effective July 1, 2017 through June 30, 2018, as presented. So moved.
Second.
There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. That takes us to consent items under general business, one through 14. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented tonight.
Approve, move to approve items one through 14 consent items.
Then we'll take Ellie as a, Ellie will take you as a second, okay? Thank you. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much. Personnel items, numbers one through 20. I would entertain a motion to approve those as presented.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you. One item for information only. Uh, there may be some building permits. I didn't click on that at home. Yep, there are some building permits there for your review, if you would like to review those. That takes us to Board of Education. There are multiple thank you notes there for, um, us to look at, so please do that when you have a chance. Which takes us to formal board reports. Um, during our first section of the meeting, we have established the board, the new board, um, new board committees. Is there anyone who has a formal board report tonight? Okay, thank you. Uh, travel reports, there are four there for you to review, and that looks like it takes us to the end of our agenda. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. There's been a first and a second. All of those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion passes. Thank you very much, and welcome, Ellie, to the board.
Thank you. Honors, humbucker, so.
Thank you, Ellie.